Good day. Hope things is going well for you and we'll continue to do so. Ms. Micas, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Hicks. Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
You'd like to stand with us for the invocation and pledge, Mr. McCoy?
It's well. Oh, Lord God, again, how excellent is your name and all of the earth. We thank you again for this day. Thank you for being who you are. You are heavenly Father. Thank you for your son. We thank you for the Holy Spirit. We ask now that you bless this meeting and bless the purpose in which we are here. We bless, that you would bless each and every child that we represent. We pray for their parents. We pray, Lord God, for this school district, Washita Parish School System, and all other school systems. We lift up now the official staff. We lift up our superintendent and, Lord, all of his staff and every individual that works in this district. We pray that you bless this meeting. Let it be what you would have it be, that we do those things that are acceptable and pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. gitting salute pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No cards? Board, I need approval of the minutes for May 13th. A motion, please?
I saw, I saw move that we approved.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? And there's none. We need to amend the agenda to add items number four and five. So do we have a motion to amend?
I make, I make a motion that we amend.
No second. Motion to move and been made in second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion carried. Now we need to approve the agenda as this has been amended. All in favor? Give me a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Personnel report, Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Mr. Thompson, as most of you know, been very busy moving through the summer. Some of it is starting to slow down, but we do have some announcements to make today. First of all, the principal at Richwood High School, as most of you know, Dr. Locke is retiring. And it's my pleasure today to announce the appointment of Mr. Alvin Fields as the next principal at Richwood High School. Principal at Swarts Lower, Ms. Margaret Hayman, also retiring after many years of service. And again, my pleasure today to announce the appointment of Ms. Holly Daniel as the principal at Swarts Lower. With Ms. Anna Redding being promoted to principal, the assistant principal at George Welch has been open. It's my pleasure today to announce Ms. Meredith Brown as the new assistant principal. Also, board, just to keep you in the loop, we do have an assistant principalship that Mr. Fields is vacating. We will be opening that today to fill that. And then curriculum coordinator at Swarts Lower Elementary will be open later today as well. Thank you.
Mr. Manley, we have any cards?
No cards today, Mr. Como. I was shaking her head no, so.
All right, good deal. Special recognition, Ms. May.
Thank you, Ms. May and Mr. Como. If you would join Mr. Geis down on the floor, that'd be great. So we're excited today to introduce you to Colton Braiser. Colton, come on up. Colton just graduated last month, and I'm sure he has big plans, but we did ask him to come back and see us one last time so we could recognize him as the Louisiana High School Student of the Year State finalist. We're very proud of you, Colton. Thank you, Mr. Como. That's all I have today.
Mr. Manley has a special announcement. He likes to come up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Como. I wanted to kind of take some time and recognize the Sturgerton High School baseball team. Ordinarily, we have them come up, but unfortunately, it wasn't able to fit in their schedule. But we do plan on having them to come up for recognition in front of the board as state champions at the high school. So also have a pizza party probably with them at a later date, whatever works out for their schedule. But I also wanted to bring up to the board that Sturgerton High School won the state championship football and the state championship in baseball this year. So that's quite an accomplishment. I think it speaks highly of our administrators at Sturgerton High School, our coaches, our staff, our students and players. And I think it shows the commitment to excellence that they have in that community and in the school. So congratulations to the Sturgerton High School Panthers.
Go Panthers! Item number two, consider insurance renewal. Mr. Kevin Woods with Gallagher Insurance.
Thank you, Mr. President, board. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Kevin Woods. I'm the product of the school board and school system here in Washita Parish. So I really appreciate the opportunity to get in front of y'all. So we had the insurers there in front of you. First and foremost, the property piece. Thank goodness the property market in the state of Louisiana, at least for commercial, is leveling out. So that's a, that's a very good thing. And as you can see, we had a small increase of about 15 million for the policy limit for the coverage, and then just a very small increase to go along with that. So as you know, we've talked about it over the years, there's very few markets in the state of Louisiana that will write a large risk such as the school boards or any school for that matter. Going on down the page, we have the equipment breakdown. Essentially, that's tied to your property coverage and your total insurable values. Very small increase there as well. Excess work comp. And then the liability package, which includes several things, obviously, general liability, auto liability, and that sort of thing. So no change in terms and conditions or any of that package. Very small increase there, as well as the executive package, which includes your cyber, your crime, kidnapping, ransom. So essentially, no change in terms or conditions for any of the policies this year. One thing that we will need to do is put a, put a vote up in regard to the uninsured motorist coverage. So in the past, uninsured motorist coverage has been declined by the school board, and we would recommend that you continue to do that. So total premium, bottom of the page there, to the right, two, $2,138,850. That includes the Louisiana Fair Plan assessment. Any questions?
Board, just a couple, little bit of information. We have met with, with Kevin and his team several times. Mr. Manley has been involved with us in that with his background in the insurance as we normally do. So we are recommending this, I guess we being Regina and I, to the board if Mr. Manley wants to add anything he can.
I just appreciate Kevin and his company taking care of the school board. They put a great package together, comprehensive, covering a lot of our exposures that I think we need coverage on. I think the premium of 3.5% increase is reasonable based on the increase in coverage amount, too. So based on that, and Kevin did mention he's a product of Washita Parish School System, but he's a graduate of Washita High School. So I want to personally make that recognition to him, as is Brad Berchem on the front row. So we got two former Washita graduates here representing the insurance company.
1989.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, that's the year we won the state championship.
Few years ago.
In football. First state championship ever at Washita High School.
That's right.
One more than 1911.
That's exactly right. I don't know what's short as any. But I would make a recommendation and a motion that we approve the insurance package as presented by Kevin and Gallagher, and also that we exclude the uninsured motorist coverage that he has outlined under our policy.
Second. Kevin, motion to approve and reject?
I think Mr. Harold had a question.
Yes, I'm ready for you.
I just have a question. This is my ignorance stat. There was no flood coverage. There was exclusion for some of the sites.
Right. So the policy, the, the, the property policy does include flood for some of the locations. Outside of that, y'all have separate policies that actually renew at a separate time of the year for anything that's in a flood zone. Yeah, no, that's good. Good question.
It led to a lot of our discussion as well. So we had a lot of discussion in that area, too.
Flood's always of a concern, obviously, in the state of Louisiana. We're getting a lot of rain. So flash floods could happen anytime.
Okay, we have a motion to reject the uninsured motors and approve the policy as presented. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Brett.
Let's see. Finance committee report, Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Good afternoon, board. The finance committee met on Tuesday, May 20th, at the Washita Parish School Board in this very room. The agenda for the meeting should be attached in your packet today, as well as the approved minutes from that May 8th finance committee meeting. There were three agenda items that we took action upon that day. You should be able to see those in your packet, and there were actions taken on each of those. Item number one, the finance committee has recommended that you consider approving the operation or operating budget revision that you should be hearing later today from Ms. Micas. Number two, we actually tabled a motion to increase the allotment for band equipment for high schools until we can get a little further information gathered. And then number three, the committee has also recommended that you consider an increase in act cost meal charges. And I think Ms. Carrero will have more information on that here later today as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Next regularly scheduled meeting for the finance committee will be Thursday, August 14th at 9:00 a.m. in this room. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Item four, consider and approve annual operating budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2425. Ms. Micas?
Now it's good afternoon. Good afternoon, board. You each have in your packet a copy of the annual operating budget, budget revision number one for the 2024-2025 school year. As you know, we had a hearing on this at 11 o'clock this morning where we went through the budget in detail. So if you have any other questions that have come to mind since then, I'd be happy to answer any of them now.
No questions, no comment? Need a motion to approve this revision number one for 2425?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Item five, consider approving the increase in that cost meal charges. Ms. Carrero?
She stepped outside.
She stepped out. Looks like she had a phone call. She want to...
We'll just skip on down to the next one. Item number six, if that's legal, policy, consideration of policy EDD, Ms. Nichols or Ms. Ferguson?
I'm a West Monroe High School product as well, just saying.
Congratulations.
Ms. Nichols and I graduated together. Okay, so we, Mr. McCormick has brought to our attention some changes that need to be made with our bus transportation and scheduling. So he has reached out to some other local districts through forethought and has come up with some changes that need to be made in policy. So at this time, we're just asking that we are allowed to consider changes made to policy EDD. The policy review committee will meet on June the 30th, and then we will make the recommended changes to you at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
Do we need your approval to consider it?
I don't think so. You're just, you're just introducing it today.
Might seniority, Ms. Carrero somewhere.
Can you step out too, Ms. Carrero is in the lobby, please? Thank you.
Just move on. Item number seven, consideration approval of purchase of property at Full, Full Registered Street. This is a house that we've been interested in that finally came available at the price that we wanted to pay, so. I need a motion to give permission to purchase this.
I'm a commotion.
The purchase of property at Full, Full Registered Street.
All right, well, I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you, guys. Item eight, consideration approval of naming an architect of record for 2025 Eastside Bond, Mr. Hemphill?
Good afternoon. We met with Eastside Board members on, a couple weeks ago, discussed their projects with the Eastside Bond, and all three have considered using TBA as their lead record architect firm to watch over their projects and keep them within budget. So I guess that come recommendation from the board members?
So we...
Make a motion?
We need a motion for the...
I'll make a motion that we appoint TBA as the lead architect for the Eastside Bond proposal.
A motion and a second.
Second.
And I have to recuse myself reluctantly. I have to recuse myself.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Motion carry.
Thank you, board.
Ms. Carrero? Consider approve on increase in cost meal charges?
Kim, you can breathe now.
I'm, I'm down to the board because I thought that when you presented the finance committee, you would have presented that also or mentioned something, because I tried to find out in advance and nobody could tell me anything. We've all been going to me in directions the past couple of weeks. Okay, and I don't even have your hand out. From what I understand, it's not in your, in your...
Packet.
In your packets, and I so apologize.
It's okay.
No, it's not. Okay, basically what this is about is every year we have to figure up our total plate cost of what it costs us to produce a meal at both breakfast and at lunch. And, and this includes everything. It includes our equipment. It includes our labor. We, we pay everything except for medical insurance. The school board pays that, health insurance, correct? Okay. We pay for everything else in our department. So therefore, we generate the money that we run and operate off by the meals we serve. So therefore, the meals we serve, especially for any, let's just say, required by federal guidelines that we have for any outside meals, meaning visitor meals, and that's what I'm addressing today, is visitor meals. Anyone who comes in, whether it's a child or an adult, that comes and eats breakfast or lunch, cannot be anything less than, than what it costs us to produce a meal. I think the last time I brought to the board to raise visitor meal prices for lunch was in 2019, and I asked to increase it to $5. Today, I'm asking to increase it $1 to, to $6. And the reason being is... Okay, the cost to produce a lunch this year was $4.80, okay? The average cost for breakfast was $3.25. We have been charging breakfast, I think it was $2.50. And so we have to go up on breakfast, although we don't have very many breakfast adult meals or visitor meals. But we have to. If we do not increase it, the state department will not approve our application to, to participate in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. So I'm coming to the board today, I thought while I'm doing this, because our costs have been going up gradually each year. Since it is costing us $4.80 for lunch, we're only collecting $5 now. I would like while I'm coming to the board to raise that to $6 for the visitor lunch meal and $4 for the visitor breakfast meal. As again I stated, the breakfast cost was $3.22. I wish I had my paper in front of you. I will forward that to y'all. Does anybody have any questions?
Jason, you don't have it. Were you from our finance meeting?
I apologize.
Okay. Any questions?
And I'm only doing this, I don't come very often on this. I'm not raising any of the teacher meals. I'm not raising any student meals right now, but...
Since you raised those, of course, that statement, how much is the student meals and the teacher?
The student meal is, is a dollar for breakfast. That's elementary and secondary, and it's... Teacher meal is two dol, is $2. No, $1.50. I can't, it's not much at all. And then the lunch meal for students is $1.50 for elementary, and it's $1.75 for secondary, and it's $3 for teachers. So...
So you're wanting to increase the visitor's meals... You're wanting to increase the visitor lunch and breakfast by the cost of $1?
No, $2 for breakfast and $1 for lunch.
Okay.
So it's going to be $4?
It'd be $4 for breakfast, $6 for lunch.
Okay. Have a motion to make these increases as discussed?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Ms. Carrero's recommendation to increase the visitor meal at breakfast to $4 per person and the lunch meal to $6 per person, per her recommendation.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? No. There's none. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all and my, I apologize again for my non-preparation.
We'll get back.
Okay, okay.
Item number nine, adopt the Edvolum Tax Millage for 2025. Ms. Micas?
Board, you have in your packets the resolution for adopting the tax millage for the 2025 tax roll. Just a, a side note, this is not in relation to the bond issue that just passed. This is just the standard adoption of millage that we're required to do by law each year for the tax roll of that year. With that being said, I will point out that East Washita, the East Washita Parish School District is on the millage adoption for 36 meals. This is no change from previous years. The constitutional tax millage is 5.18, and the maintenance and operation is 24.15. Also, no change from prior years.
Any questions, discussion? Need a motion to approve the Edvolum Tax for 2025?
So moved. Second?
A motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you. Ms. Micas, next item is financial report for April 30th.
You have the financial reports for April 30th, 2025 in your packets. I will point out, I won't go into great detail since we've, we have discussed budget at length this morning. We'll finish the period with 37 million in fund balance for the general fund. That's 85% of where we were at this time last year. A large reason for that is the decline in student population along with a lesser increase of sales tax than we had initially projected for this year. A lesser increase than what we've seen in prior years, still not lesser than prior year. Does that make sense? It's more than prior year.
Was the amount within what we had anticipated in our budget?
The amount is less than we had anticipated in our original budget. Thank you, Mr. Manley. And with District One MNO, we'll end the period with 32 million in fund balance. We're at about 110% of where we were this time last year. Of course, I would point out that there are journal entries to be made that will, in closing, adjust that, and we expect to end the year closer to 100% of where we were last year, not 110%. Of course, you have the 1968 sales tax, 1995 sales tax. And I know many of you have gotten the question that I have gotten over the last few weeks about the 13th check, and I know I brought this up. When we know, you'll know. Y'all will be the first to know. We put that on our website. As soon as we have that calculation, at this time, we're still waiting on our deposit. Once we have that deposit, the wheels start turning, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item number 11, 2025-2026 Official Journal, Washita Parish School System, RFQ, Jerry Peters?
Good afternoon, board. Every year, it's required that we adopt a, our official journal, and this journal is a publication where we publish our, our public bids, board meeting minutes, and various items. After receiving three quotes for that official journal for the 25-26 school year, I'm requesting the board to approve the Washita Citizen to be our official journal.
Any discussion? Questions? All in favor of approving that? I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve this?
I saw Boo will approve the Washita Citizen to be our official journal based on the quotes that we received and your recommendation.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carry. Evaluation bids? We don't have any? Permission to bid?
We do have one, and I'm going to ask Ms. Jo Lynn Carrero to come up and share that one with you.
I was just going to go ahead and just explain. This is going to be various large equipment for some schools. This will include Lake Shore, Good Hope, and Washita High. At the moment, we pretty much are up to snuff on most of our large equipment. And I'm also including some shelving for Pine Crest and for Lake Shore. That's, that's going to be, honestly, it's only 100,000.
Any questions? You know, motion to grant permission to bid on these?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you. Board, our next board meeting is July 8th. It'll be on Tuesday. Any questions or comments, Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I mean, it will be on Tuesday. Thanks to the board for allowing us to move today. Several of us will be headed to 2025 Teacher Leader Summit this afternoon. We have over 100 teachers and coordinators, administrators that will be attending that annual event put on by the Department of Education. So a lot has been going on. Ms. Nichols held her summer principal institute last week. Our elementary and high school principals and instructional leadership teams, a lot of those members will be in next week. So school is out, but this is a very busy time for us here at the central office. As too, as we await the close of legislative session Thursday to see what that will bring about, too, in their final bills. So a lot going on, but appreciate everything you do. That's all I've got.
Okay, I skipped item number 12. Mr. Hemphill, you'd like to share some information with us? I pulled on... I'm sorry?
Were you seeing your handout with the updates on everything? I think we got, last week, we got approval for the fire marshal for West Washita on a track and field building, going through the punch list. We do have Sturgerton High School going through punch lists and all that. So hopefully, we'll move through that pretty quickly.
Did have one all that's completed, because I'd like to come out and meet you out there and go through everything that we had.
Cade, Cade already went through that punch list. He's going through it and making sure it's all getting done. Did have a ribbon cutting on the 29th, May 29th, for Richwood Middle School multipurpose building. If you hadn't seen that building, go out and see it. It looks really nice.
What date is that on? What date?
May 29th.
May the 29th. We've already had it, May the 29th. We just squeezed it in there.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. Can you, you read that? We did get the treatment plants in at, at Woodlawn and Calhoun Middle. Calhoun Middle's running. We're waiting to get new... We're waiting to get new service in for energy for the new treatment plant, so. Other than that, that's about all I have.
What about the roof at Sturgerton Lower?
Sturgerton Lower?
Yeah, the difference in color. What do you find out about that? What's some of the black or darker color? I saw it's up, I saw it's up.
What's the upper?
Yeah, that roof we put on.
Oh, yeah, they, they have done some, they're going to replace a bunch of that roofing on the front, and the people that we bought the material from, they're going, they're going to pay to have that done, so. We'll see what that looks like in a couple of weeks. But they, they should be finished, I think, putting some metal around the edges, and what's really held them up is, I mean, it ain't even dried out yet out there from, from the spring, so they, they don't want to run no machine over playground, they done tore up enough out there, don't need to tear no more up, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Hemp Hill.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate each one of you in attendance today, I need a motion to adjourn.
I so moved, second.